All right, everybody, let's uh let's get started. Welcome to our budget session for uh March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, just a uh note in the front, it's uh after the presentations the other day. Then the presentations today really have to be spot on. I'm gonna turn it over and welcome everybody and uh we'll turn it over to our city manager to welcome.
Welcome, everybody. I'll be quick. So this is our second budget presentation meeting. From the remainder of our departments, you can see in front of you, police, rec, engineer and IT, water resource recovery facility and utilities engineer and then uh administration. Uh, another thank you to our finance staff, sitting in the right corner uh over here on my right. And the department heads and uh the uh the staffs in all the departments, they've put a lot of work to get us here. This is the presentation of their request, so we haven't started balancing a budget, comparing revenues and extent expenditures, uh but you will be seeing uh their request in their budget. I think first we've got Chief Terrence Caldwell with the Police Department.
Short timer.
He always has a smile on his face, but it's it's a lot.
It's a little bigger this time.
A little bigger this time, yeah, and I am wearing this today out of respect for you, by the way. This is your.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Mayor Hooks, and I I'll just tell you all that after he told me of the fact that he was wearing Carolina blue, he also reminded me that we wouldn't have a basketball team next year, so. He picked me up to cut me down. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Rollins, all others present, um, thank you for allowing me one more opportunity to present. It's not that bad, Mr. Mayor. You will survive without me, I promise.
You know, I couldn't have planned this any better. I'm sorry. Anything else broke? Okay.
Everybody awake now?
Yes.
I'm just closing it. Let's go.
So uh again, thanks all. Appreciate each and every one of you from Mr. Rollins, Mr. Mitchell. Uh, to our finance department that um, I don't know about the other departments. Um, I I know that we've taxed y'all uh many a times in budget and otherwise to our HR department. And everyone else in the room, the partners, the partnerships uh to our CIO back there, getting welcome and Kurt all the way in the back. Thanks all. Uh, we'll we'll start by um, let's just correct. By laying out our organizational chart, um, you all have seen it and speaking to the current staff and vacancies, so we have two police cadet positions open, um, one criminal investigator position open and five police officer positions open. In summary, three of those positions, open positions, we associate with the allocation of the school resource officer positions times three. Um, three of our positions were uh personnel related matters. Uh, and then uh two of our positions, one of our officers recently moved to the beach. Um, young man, so we we wish him well and would welcome him if he decided to come back to Middle North Carolina. And then one that left and went to another agency. So our highlights were uh of twenty-two, twenty-three, where they approved and purchased uh vehicles for this fiscal year. Again, the allocation and implementation of the additional school resource officers, and I can tell you council members that um, our schools, our parents, our community are very happy uh that that we partnered with ABSS to to make this happen. Uh additionally, in our volunteer capacity, we helped three hundred sixty-one families uh in the Meben area, I think. That's three hundred and sixty-one people altogether uh with our Christmas drive and annual toy drive. Uh, and then budget-wise, we're looking at replacing um our HVAC systems throughout the police facility, and that's a work in progress as we speak. I would be remiss if I didn't allow Lieutenant Cole the opportunity to speak for a couple of slides, and he's going to talk to the or speak to the uh goals for twenty-three, twenty-four guilty.
Thank you. Um, so our goals for twenty-three, twenty-four, we have recruitment and retention of quality police officers. Um, we're wanting to do a recruitment video. We've done brochures, getting out into the local BLAT schools and and talking and recruiting that way. Um, reimplementation of the police explores program, we had a couple of years ago, kind of went away. Uh Sergeant Snell with our SROs is working on getting that going again. And then the continued planning for the new police facility, as that's an ongoing project throughout a few years.
How do we, how are salaries stacking up against the organizations around the county, Highway Patrol? Are we still pretty competitive?
Uh, I haven't seen us against Highway Patrol, but um against their county agencies, we're we're pretty competitive. You know, we're hoping with the uh incentive program that kind of helps us out as well.
Thank you.
Uh, the the next budget year, uh we'll be asking for three new vehicles and three replacement vehicles. The three new would be uh in lieu of the SROs coming on. I kind of got behind there, so that'll put us up to where we need to be. You know, I'm not in there for twenty-four budget years, the land and planning. Um, and that goes with architecture and whatever comes along with the plan, planning for the new police department. And of course, the following year, hopefully, we'll have the police department in the budget to be moving on with a roof replacement is obviously is going to be done after we get done with HVAC. And that has to be done before we replace the roof, and so that's why the roof replacement is in the uh budget year twenty-four. And I'm gonna turn it back over to Chief Caldwell.
So there you have it. Uh, in summary, council members, uh again, thank you all for your unwavering support uh to allow us to to be able to serve our community members and and all those that come to and through Meben um on behalf of the Police Department. You know, for us, it's all about relationships and collaboration uh with the different entities uh under the community-oriented policing concept and my God, you 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 guys have surely made it easy for the department to be able to do and and carry this philosophy out for um for some time now, and we just uh hope that going forward into twenty-three, twenty-four and the years beyond that, we continue to see that happen. Be glad to answer any questions that you all may have.
What are the, what are they gonna have to do to the roof? It seems awfully high just for a shingle replacement. Are they having to repair the decking too or?
Yes, this this would be a complete uh replacement of the of the roof, Mr. Bradley. Yes, sir.
My memory is you have some flat roof and some, you got a mixed kind of roof.
We do. We do, which kind of complicates it um that situation.
Yeah. I think it's actually the original roof and a roof that was put on top of it, so both of them had to be removed as well.
I just, I thought that seemed awfully high just singles, but I was gonna put my house off another twenty years of that one.
Chief, again, what did, what the five positions that are open, where did you say that? Why were they open again? I heard you say.
So a total, total of eight positions, Councilman Hadley, uh three of those are a result of us uh at this point backfilling the three SRO positions.
Okay, okay.
Um, three positions related to personnel matters. Um, and then two, two were um just jobs with different agencies.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Director Aaron Davis.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, Mr. Rollins, Mr. Brown.
You're gonna be as quick as the Police Department.
Tough act to follow in many respects, um, of course, as always. Um, thanks for giving us this time, and we appreciate all that you have done um for for our department and for the city. Reiterate, as I always do, that uh Meben is one big team. Um, certainly in recreation and parks, we could not uh survive, uh provide for the citizens without the help of all the other departments. Um, so thank you to all my fellow department heads and their teams. Um, tru- truly is a team effort every year. Um, here is uh, actually, let me back up, maybe. There we go. Um, so before I get to organizational chart, just want to remind you all um that we are still working on what we call the three Cs, uh completion, correction, and companion construction. As we work through the master plan, uh which should be ready um sometime in early to I I'd say mid to late summer, and we should have the master plan completed. Um, as we work through that, we we really have gotten a lot of citizen input on what's to come in the future. And um we are going to tackle those adventures uh as we get there, um when the master plan is completed. So what you will see through this presentation is still a lot of correction and completion. Um, so I just wanted to make that clear. Um, so if there are questions, uh we can answer them in in that way. So uh organizational chart, again, thank you so much. Um, to my right and my left, um, I have Chris Clipping and Shawna Joplin. Um, y'all approved superintendent positions for our department last year. Um, we are uh uh learning, we are growing. Um, I couldn't couldn't do this um without these two and the rest of our crew. Um, it's it's uh certainly been a lot of fun, and we are tackling, um, you know, just trying to figure out where everybody lays um within this this organizational structure. So thank you for um the positions. Uh, we're we're really excited about the future. Highlights um from last year, uh some of these uh were funded in previous budget years, but were completed uh last year. We got the basketball court open. I hope all of you have driven by there at some point and seen the outstanding uh participation that we're getting out there. Um, the Juneteenth event was really awesome, uh probably uh one of the most difficult days of my career when that happened. Uh, we also had the Hall of Fame that day, and if you remember, power was out. Uh, and then uh, yeah, thi- this coming weekend is our second extravaganza and bunny hop. So um filler stage uh project is underway, master plan is underway. Um, so we we've got many other highlights that we couldn't fit on this slide, but but these are just some of them. Um, I mentioned the three Cs, the completion, correction, and companion construction. I'm not going to go through all of these. Um, but we've got a lot of projects going on. We appreciate your support and your patience as we um start and complete these. Uh, and lastly, we want to continue to offer positively charming programs and events to the community. Um, just a quick update on two projects. Number one, the Lake Michael Park spillway renovation. Uh, we actually are uh planning an EAP um meeting for next week um with with um folks from all over Orange and Alamance County to talk about, you know, what could happen um if this ever does bust through and what do we need to do and what do we need to look for? So that that's exciting. The design work for the new spillway is coming up. Um, and hopefully, this whole project will be completed sometime in March of twenty twenty-five, um likely a little bit longer, but hopefully we'll we'll get through this pretty quickly.
Aaron, have we um contacted Orange County about participating in this repair?
So I I have not recently. Um, it's probably been a year or so, and and I did not get a lot of support um from their Recreation and Parks Director, um but certainly could could reach out again.
Aaron mentioned EAP. My memory is emergency action plan. Uh, that's a requirement uh for a high-hazard dam like that. It's a state requirement, so they are having a tabletop exercise uh to go over that plan.
And and that'll be a plan that is reviewed annually. Um, the meetings uh typically take place every five years, but it will be reviewed annually. Um, we understand um what could happen if if something did bust through or what have you. Um, so we want to be prepared for that and know the proper protocols.
Are you gonna close the entire lake for a year roughly?
Y- yes, sir.
Have a call the road, you can't get through the road.
There'd be a lot of construction, um, a lot of vehicles. The the lake level will likely be lowered um quite a ways down. I don't think we decided on fully, um but uh we're gonna have to move some some fish and and um and and it's it's gonna be quite the project. Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's impossible basically to keep the lake open during that time. You don't know how close that spillway is to the entrance road right there. That's where the the main construction is gonna be going on.
And just as a reminder, this is gonna be a completely new dam, right? It's gonna be.
Yes, sir, and um we're actually um, we're actually in the design phase, looking at um you know, as we talk about the trails around the lake and such, we're looking at a a bridge to go across the spillway that would allow for easier access and an easier flow for when that trail may be completed. Um, so they, we may have um the trail extend across the top of the dam itself and then across a bridge through the spillway. Um, and and for, as we've looked at it and we've talked with um Mr. Holt about how we can get people back up the hill when you when you enter the lake, if you're on bike or walking, um the ease, if we had this bridge, would be pretty, pretty incredible um for those coming from the other subdivisions, um but also where we have space, so. Could could be a really neat um design.
Clarify, it's gonna be a whole new concrete spillway. The earthen dam structure is getting a few improvements, but it remains the same, but the concrete structure will be completely replaced.
Thank you.
Um, Kate's Farm Park Playground uh construction, earth moving is is underway. Um, I know Kyle Smith's crew is gonna be getting busy here um soon, and um we're hoping uh to have all of that pre-work done by the by this fall and then uh hopefully start construction on the actual playground in October and and finish up some time around uh this time next year, so. Um, what you see pictured is is what we have um uh funding for. Um, unfortunately, we didn't receive the accessibility for parks grant, but we hope to reapply for that in the future um to help complete um the rest of the the total of nine towers, so. Um, we're excited um about the construction starting on that and um a lot of, uh uh we had a call yesterday, a lot of the trail users are kind of poking their head over, what what's going on over here? We want to know. So we're trying to get the word out on on what's coming, and I think everybody's really excited about it. Um, capital improvement requests. Um, like I said, we're still working on the three Cs, so a lot of these you'll find completion or correction. Um, desperately need parking at the community park. Um, the uh uh I I think I think people are racing to get there plenty early uh on soccer nights, just so they can find a place to park. Um, and uh the 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 back entrance would would be very helpful. Um, we still are working on the Lake Michael Connector, which this might be the second or third time you you have seen this in the budget. It uh it seems as though we we get so far and then we find that this permit needs to come or that or this expense is gonna be higher. So we're still working on finishing that, and it will tie in with uh the spillway um renovation project with the with that potential bridge we talked about. Um, and then uh we've had the number four and five here. Um, we've had a lot of structural engineers around the city lately. Um, looking at the boathouse at the lake and the gym floor at the old rec. Um, currently, we're just uh asking for funds to remove the building at the lake and then um sit down and and reassess the situation, the need for a boathouse, and also how it ties into the timeline of the uh spillway renovation. And then um I actually have an update on number five. I've I've had a hard time getting somebody out to get a price. Um, it, the the real price on that floor restoration is probably more like a hundred and sixty thousand instead of eighty-five. Um, we had somebody out there this week looking at it, and there's a lot of pieces of that floor underneath that just aren't fastened properly. A lot of things need to be replaced. Um, and then the the sixth item there with the trails is just to get started um with the design and the engineering. Um, most, I believe a lot of the permitting is completed, um but uh we want to make sure that we can start that project. And then uh Kate's Farm in the future would like to get phase two completed as well. Um, our five thousand to twenty-five thousand dollar items, again, these are really just repairs and replacements. Um, Lake Michael piers, uh fishing piers, not the docks, but the piers that are along the shoreline. Um, looking to repair those. We've got some wear and tear, uh some basketball hoops, both at the MAC and um the old rec. But we actually had a request for basketball practice rental and one of our hoops over at the old rec, the height adjusters broken on that, and they're very, very uh aged um uh equipment, so it's tough to tough to find that right now. Um, we want to complete some water bottle fillers at the parks. You'll see in the next couple of months that the that we'll have four of them going in. Uh, so that's good. I think I think uh the water fountain age is is coming to an end, and people are carrying their water bottles everywhere they go. Um, so this will be a a great help to being able to fill up a water bottle. Um, so just a couple of storage buildings, um and uh it uh again, mostly mostly repairs and and renovations.
Only your pier repairs. Were you doing that out of wood or tech?
So it's wood. Um, we could look at other options. I I have farther down in the CIP, I have a complete replacement of all three of those piers. We didn't think that we needed to do that quite yet, so this is um more like uh shoring up the the base that's in the water. Um, of course, same same issue we had with the other boat docks is that we've got four-by-four posts sitting in the water, and it's only gonna last for so long. So we're starting to see some structural issues with that.
The water water fillers, where exactly will those be around town?
So the first four um that we that we have received this year, one will go at the community park. Um, I believe we'll have one at the basketball court, one at Holt, I'm sorry, that's 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 next year. It's it's Holt Street Park, Community Park, and then both the MAC Soccer and MAC Baseball Complex. So um the others will come in the future.
Okay, thank you.
You got it. Got some fee changes. Um, you know, um, we uh have seen just a plethora of participation in our programs. Um, amazingly, uh about fifty percent this past year and the year before, i- it's a non-resident resident split at about fifty percent. Um, we've also taken a look at our our wait lists, um which for some sports, I know we've talked about a little bit that um, you know, we can only take uh so much of a capacity for these programs, and our waiting lists are getting a little bit longer, so we've talked with, um especially for summer camps, we're we're in talks with the new uh Southeast High School about possibly having them run similar camps to a Eastern helps us with, um and opening up more spaces for those, so hopefully we can do that. Um, but uh these are, these are just uh, you know, I don't know when the last time rates were increased for for participation. Um, but uh no- nothing, nothing too crazy, but we we do want to increase a little bit. Um, one of the items on here you can see is a pickleball and open gym fee, and that's, I I just want to make the point that that's only for non-residents. Um, what we're seeing is that we're getting a lot of, we're getting so many people to come in and play pickleball, for instance. Um, and it's it's, there's a lot of wait time, and and that's non-residents coming and taking spots at residents. We want to make sure that our residents get that benefit um uh wi- without cost, so um just just a couple of things. Um, turn tournament rates, um and and again, the first one on this list is is a is just a non-resident increase um for the community park. Um, residents would still still stay at the same. I think, is it twenty-five dollars? So um, and then uh tournament rates are are still less than your Apex, your Holly Springs, Greensboro, um Rocky Mount, that also have artificial turf fields, so.
How will you uh collect the fees? Two-dollar fees on the pickleball and the open court?
That is a good question. I've talked to our finance department about that, and we are, we are discussing exactly how we're gonna do that. Um, the the sentiment that I got was if if it is something we need to do, then we will work out a way to make sure that we're doing it properly. Um, these uh sponsorship changes are mainly just uh uniform costs for sports teams, and this is all based just on inflation. If we're gonna have somebody donate money to the city, we want to make sure that we are then able to turn the uniforms over um uh at the cost that they're um providing to us. And uh I think we just, we just ordered, how many T-ball teams?
Eight.
Eight T-ball teams, and I think it was three, three thousand dollars for for uniforms and hats, and that's a basic, you know, two-button Henley and a and a ball cap, so. Um, as prices go up, we just want to make sure that if we're receiving sponsorship money, that it's it's doing what we intended to do.
Uh, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but uh on the two dollars of, I mean, it it seems like that might be labor-intensive. Would it be better, would it be more prudent to just let somebody buy an annual license, like, you know, I'll pay fifteen dollars a year to get on Outer Banks, drive my and that that whole year?
Right. We did, we did discuss that, um, Mr. Bradley, um, and we we could add that as an offering, um likely take an average, we do run some numbers and figure out what the average was. We we currently have everybody check in when they get to the MAC to play. Um, and so we we could run some numbers and figure out what the average usage rate is for a certain non-resident that comes in and and could add that if that's something you'd like to see. I I certainly agree with you that it would be easier for a one-time payment than um than a two dollars twice a week or however they may do that. And and possibly op- uh offer both.
It seems like, it just seems like identifying whether the individuals in the city are out one time is easier than doing it every time they show up.
Right, I understand. Yes, sir.
Now, the regular fees, um minus the sponsorships, how do they compare with surrounding municipalities?
Yeah, um, I mean, if I go back to just resident, non-resident athletic fees, I mean, it's it's um right in line at at twenty and fifty, twenty resident, fifty non-resident, it's 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 less or the least that somebody would pay um than most. I I Chris may be able to give you exact numbers.
Yeah, so um Alamance County is is a forty-dollar rate for everyone. You cannot participate with them if you are outside of the county. I think they have switched that now to to allow people from a certain distance to play in their program, but they're at forty dollars for everybody within Alamance County. Um, municipalities, Graham is forty dollars for a non-resident. They charge twenty-five dollars if you're in town. Um, Gibsonville is very similar to that. Um, Burlington is right around the same rate as us for residents, but they are much higher on non-resident fees. I believe they're eighty-five dollars for a non-resident, so we're 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 in line with everybody. We we feel like changing the uh resident fee slightly is still a benefit to to our citizens. Um, and that also allows us to kind of make the programs better as we go, so we we don't want to, you know, turn people away and make cost an issue. One thing we have done is we've added a scholarship program for residents, so um if by increasing this, we are impacting our residents, there's a scholarship they can apply for. All they have to do is show that they receive some form of financial assistance from the government, and they get approved. Um, so we we have that in place for residents to kind of protect against any concerns with the the increase in cost. Uh, we we get those donations from individual sign-ups, so parents sign up and they just click a button that says, yes, I would like to donate five dollars. It's a very good way that we put that on the form. It says, would you like to help a kid participate in athletics? And people say. And people say yes. So we've got several thousands of dollars just sitting in a fund right now, waiting to give out to people. But I believe because our rates are low enough, a lot of people are not applying yet. So this could help us drive more people to the scholarship. So we are not concerned about the potential impact turning people away, because we do have that scholarship in place. And if we ever want to explore opening that up to more people, we could do that as well.
Well, you said you had a waiting list. Do we have in-city people waiting as opposed to outsides?
Yes, Mr. Bradley. So we were actually trying to run that report this morning, because we had a hunch somebody would ask that question. Unfortunately, our software doesn't give us that ability. They're on a waitlist. We can't separate a resident versus non-resident, because they're not actually in the program. But I can tell you that with not having duplicates, last year, we had about fourteen hundred participants in all of our youth and adult athletic programs. If you include duplicates, it's more like two thousand that participated, probably in multiple sports or what have you. And our total waitlisted participants is at about three hundred and forty. A lot of that is basketball camp. Our basketball program has quite a few. And so it really, it really comes down to bandwidth. But what we're working on right now, and it's starting with our camps, is the first week of registration will be resident registration only. And then we'll open it up to non-residents as well. Unfortunately, once the registration period ends, whether you're a resident or non-resident, you're going to go on the waitlist. However, when we pull folks off of the waitlist, we go resident first. So if we're going to add somebody, and if somebody drops out of basketball, we're going to add somebody off the waitlist. We go to the first person in line that is a resident.
Well, it seems to me that if you're giving a week's advance for residents to apply, and if they don't get in and they get on the waiting list, they missed their chance. I would just, I mean, I'd love to have not that athletic facilities to host every kid that wanted to play, but realism is that registration fees don't cover the cost of what providing the opportunity is, and the citizens should get the first shot at it if they can.
That's right. Yeah, I totally agree. And again, having affordable programs is something we really pride ourselves on, and we think that especially our residents are really appreciating what we do offer. It's been fun to watch over the last couple of years.
Aaron, the Christmas parade business float fee, how's that in comparison to others?
I'll be honest, we haven't really looked at that. I think the seventy-five-dollar mark has been there for a considerable amount of time. I got the recommendation to bump it just a little bit.
That's for all entries or just the?
Just if you're a business.
Business float, okay.
If you're advertising for your business, Boy Scout troops, ball teams, they still enter for free.
And while we own the parade, since I know it's the most popular thing in December, is there any way I would like to see North Carolina A&amp;T come back again? I do understand that it's every other year, but people are already asking already, and that's something I'd like to know if it's budgeted.
Sure.
Come back.
So I don't have that listed in the budget currently with support. I would not have any problem reaching out to North Carolina A&amp;T. Really, I'd like support from Mr. Rollins and y'all to do that, if that's something you would like. It is currently not in this budget, but certainly we could ask. I don't know if they have other obligations in the off-years that they already attend, but we would certainly ask. And just to be clear, we only pay for the buses for North Carolina A&amp;T to travel to us. We actually are not paying them. And last year, we went a little bit over, because they, their band expanded and needed, they needed an extra bus.
I don't, what is it? I mean, I don't have a problem with.
Well, honestly, it's like sixty-five hundred dollars off the top of my head to rent the buses.
It's a huge draw for our parade.
In the budget or not in the budget, sixty-five hundred dollars can be found. What, I said whether it's in the budget or not in the budget, with the size of the budget, sixty-five hundred dollars could be found.
And speaking of waitlists, if I'm not mistaken, this past Christmas parade, we had a waitlist for folks wanting to be part of the parade. I think it's definitely a flagship for us, so good work on it.
Yeah, thanks. We work really hard. Obviously, safety is our number one concern. We had a, at our North Carolina Rec Directors Conference, we had a whole roundtable discussion about parades and safety. So we're making some changes to some protocols and what entries need to submit. So we may see a small decline in the next year or two, because we're going to require some more documentation. But I credit Ms. Joplin on her attention to detail and safety. With this past year being her first parade, she's really brought up a lot of things that she's worked on in her past to kind of push us in a better direction. And of course, the unfortunate events in Raleigh have moved us in that way as well. So, yeah, and truthfully, we can't expand too much. I think a hundred entries is about as far as we can go without having the final float out on. Sorry, the street left me. Anyway, we would be, we would be out in the road that we're asking people to go to.
You, is there any way you could limit the length of a group?
So we actually do that, and then they show up, and we look around like, what happened?
I know one group last year was a block.
Yes, it might have been more than that.
And I was on the, I was on the lone block side of the parade.
Yeah, I think we had a dance group that has multiple divisions within their organization, and failed to mention that to us. So we're going to try to really hone in on that.
That was the only complaint I heard, other than, you know, getting out of town when it's over with, but that's their own problem. But the only complaint I heard was why.
Yeah.
You know, which is fine. If I had a child in the dance club, then I'd be standing there waiting on them to come by. But I think that all those links would help.
And more than anything, if we know about it ahead of time, we could maybe break them up and put them in different places, so it wouldn't look like they're as long as they are, still give everybody the chance to walk in the parade.
You do a great job with it. Like Montreina said, it's a very popular thing in Alaman's County in December.
Thank you. Again, it's a huge team effort, police, fire, public works. We all have to work together to get it done. Thank you.
Aaron, another thing, we talked about the new sand. Remember, a lady had asked me about getting new sand in the volleyball court, so their team could come down from Hillsborough and play. Have you had a chance to do that?
So Ms. Joplin told me the other day, we talked about that. Apparently, we're waiting on a truck to be fixed, so that we can go pick up the sand. But we are ready to go with that. It will be done very soon.
Well, having said that, you mentioned Hillsborough. Do you charge a day fee for the volleyball court for outside residents?
We do if it's, if it is a for-profit organization or someone who is asking for money for people to participate, we do ask them to rent the courts. If it's just anyone coming to play, obviously, that they can do for free.
Well, it's not so much the fee collection, because it's not an amount to a lot of money. It's the controlling of the, making sure we keep it available for those it was intended for.
That's right, and we go through this with all of our ball fields, our tennis courts. Everything has a fee, because we want to make sure that if somebody is charging a hundred dollars a kid for something, where they're making a profit, that we too are getting a little bit back from them as well, because if they're using our facility, especially if they're coming from out of town, that we recoup a little bit of that cost. Projected revenues, nothing too out of the norm here. We've been doing very well. Credit Mr. Clipping on his attention to detail on our budget spreadsheets. And we are doing very well in the rental category, fees, all the things. We did remove the lake fees. We are going to try something new this year with some self-use out there that will be managed and such. But we will not be taking in any fees in probably the next two years with the removal, hopefully, of the building. So I wanted to eliminate that, but pretty status quo. And that's about all I have, a couple of pictures from this past year.
Any other questions from the council? All right, thanks, sir. Thank y'all.
There it is.
I wanted to talk to council about our Greenway project.
Oh, okay.
You see the map in front of you. Mr. Mitchell has diligently been working his entire Meven career for two years with a family that he has become good friends with to acquire the last easement, where you see that second dot looking from the left. He has made a lot of progress, but we are still working to do that. It's a very small easement, but it is taking some time. The property is what you would call air property, so there's multiple owners involved. One or two people can't sign an easement. Here's, it's going to take a little bit longer. As y'all know, bidding in these last couple of years continues to get higher and higher. Project is designed, it is permitted, and ready to be bid, other than that. So I think two and a half years ago, two years ago, I brought this up and said the word condemnation. That did not go over very well, and hence, we have been trying to obtain this easement. I'm still not talking about that, but I would like to propose a shift. And you see that right there. So our plans were always to connect the white trail that starts over at Corrigador is moving to the east and then goes up an existing right-of-way. A little bit more, keep on, right there, go backwards, going up on Giles Street. So making that connection to the sidewalk system in Giles Street was always part of the project. Then it was continuing down the path where you see that dirt down there, crossing sort of just north of the blue line where we needed the easement. We spoke to friends about, can we shift for the time being that portion of the project? And instead of just dead-ending at Giles and Roosevelt, take it down the existing right-of-way on Roosevelt. And if you'll remember, that lot right there at the end was donated to the city as part of this project, and then extend it straight down and tie it back to the original trail design. So our city engineer, Mr. Holt, and his staff have looked at that and think that could be done with very little change in cost. And we've been carrying that in our budget for several years now. It is not funded. We talked about borrowing money, or recently, we talked about paying it with cash. I would like to put that project out for bids and find out what it is going to cost and bring that back to you probably this summer, June, July, and figure out, are we going to build the Greenway? Are we going to borrow money? Are we going to pay for it in cash? Or are we going to put it off? We've had to extend, I know, at least one permit already. I do not believe it's going to get cheaper in the next couple of years. I think it would make a lot of sense to go ahead and get a price and figure out what that is and make a decision, are we going to move forward or not?
I think the Greenway is really important, so I'm eager to be at moving forward, whatever capacity, and we can get it going forward.
Have you had any discussion with the property owners that the sidewalk runs along? About the additional foot traffic through, say, going up, you'd go up the sidewalk on?
So we would be building the section going up the hill to Roosevelt and Giles. That's not there now, but there's clear right-of-way there, and that's been part of the project from the very beginning. So that's not something new. The new section extends from that corner, sort of due east down to the creek. And that is on the existing right-of-way and then on the property the city owns. So there's a stubbed street, there's a couple of driveways there, basically on gravel. So we would pave a portion of that, and it would be paved for the couple cars there or the people walking. But, I mean, I can see potentially this easement acquisition. I don't know if it's going to drag out for one month, three months, or another year. But we're just, we're at a point to where if it came together in the next couple of months, we'll go back to doing it exactly like we planned. We may be able to do it. If it comes together in five or six months temporarily up on the right-of-way and then put it in like we planned. But I think we've reached a point to where we need to move on and figure out what it's going to cost.
So you're just talking about bidding it?
No, I'm talking about bidding it. I'm talking about bringing those bids to city council for a decision. So it could be that they come in right where we thought, and we're going to have to make a decision. Are we going to fund it from fund balance, or are we going to borrow money to do it? And that will be your decision, but it will be a decision knowing a real number. Our hope would be probably roughly July, having that in front of you.
It could be a good idea to get the actual cost, like you stated, because for years, we've been trying to do something to that part of Roosevelt for a long, long time. So that would be the opportunity.
And it sort of sets up, Montreina knows, there's four lots there that people have been wanting to build on for years now. The family would like to build on the last one. So getting that road extension started would be part of what we would do. You know, it's a forty-foot right-of-way, is my memory. So, you know, it's not going to be thirty-one foot back-to-back curb and gutter. It will be a narrow road like we have all over town. But, and it will have very limited traffic on it. So I think this is a good option that allows us to move forward. Like I said, we'll bid it. I will not have the authority to bid it and start construction. We will bid it and then bring it back to council with, do you want to move forward?
I'd be very supportive of this, of any risk. We've learned so much in this last two years. Any risk moving forward with this?
Any risk?
Any risk. We have all the easements. We have everything all cleared, everything all.
I mean, we have design permits, easements. I don't know of any risk. The risk is, what's the dollar amount going to be?
Sure.
And we won't move forward without council action.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Aaron. Thank you, Chris. Afternoon, sir.
Hello, Mayor. Good afternoon, council. Appreciate it. I'm happy to be here before you present the engineering. Appreciate it. I'm happy to be here before you present the engineering department budget request this upcoming year. These folks here, as I've said before, sometime during the year, every one of these worked on. The City of Meven project answers a question about City of Meven, uh, and whatnot. Some do more than others. Uh, there are six professional engineers, a registered architect, and, uh, two registered surveyors. And we have some inspectors on this list as well. These folks work more often than some of the others do. Um, I know y'all know Mark, uh, but I'll start with Troy King on the left. Troy is, he works on our water and sewer design permitting. He keeps up with our sewer flow tracking, which is very important, uh, for the city. Uh, next to him is Mark, who does our, uh, street paving and, uh, yearly annual street paving and repair project. And works on most of the sidewalk projects. You pretty much know what I do. I do a lot of plan review. And, uh, working with a lot of contractors and meeting with Preston, trying to keep things moving along. And Ashley. Josh is our stormwater engineer. He works, he and Phil do inspections of ponds. Uh, help write permits. Uh, Josh is also reviews stormwater pond plans. And he is, uh, very involved with the Jordan Lake rules and watershed rules in general. Ryan King is in Meven daily, every day, sometimes nights. Uh, doing inspection work. And John Pandegraph is his backup. And, uh, assists with grant applications that the city may go after from time to time. Departmental highlights, there's, most of our work on departmental highlights has been assisting with CIP planning. And we have done some, uh, funding assistance applications. We've worked with Kyle on, uh, some grants for water and sewer. Uh, we've received, uh, both of those AIA grants. Uh, we also applied for some funding with Brick 22. For the flood wall and I and I project that we, uh, haven't heard back yet. Unfortunately, we did apply for the phase two, uh, Case Farm Park. Uh, our points were high enough to be selected on that. Uh, as you're aware, we have been working with departments on, with the fire department on planning of two future, uh, fire stations. We've been very involved with this Clay Street infrastructure improvements, working with Chuck and Kyle on that and the community in Preston. And Kelly on that. Uh, the WRF expansion. We have monthly meetings on that. It's about seventy percent complete, but we assist with that. And we're completing the long-range utility plan. We did resurface and repair one point eight, seven miles of streets this year. You can see the amount of inspection work associated with water sewer lines, sidewalks, and streets. And then again, uh, the permitting that has gone on with stormwater. Goals for the rest of this year and, and coming fiscal year. Uh, we're nearing the completion of the long-range, long-range utility plan update. Uh, I hope to be in front of council in June or July, uh, making that presentation. Uh, we do have, we have bid the paving and resurfacing project for this year. Includes fifteen streets that are going to be resurfaced, thirteen that are going to be, uh, patched. Again, that, that is hopefully going to be completed by June, but may roll into summer. Uh, you see the additional departmental support we plan to provide for major projects that are ongoing. Uh, the last bullet point item you see down there is actually turned into a highlight. Uh, we did receive our flow reduction request, uh, for flow that does go to the City of Grand Waste Water Treatment Plant. Uh, what that will mean is that we need to look at our system development fees. Because they are prorated at a hundred and twenty gallons per day per bedroom. That has now been reduced down to eighty. Uh, I would anticipate projects that have already been permitted, we would continue to charge the same rate that we charge now. And any new permit applications there, we would need to make that adjustment. Revenues in this current year. The first six months, we're at two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, I have a list of projects that are not included, but are projects that are near, ready to be stamped and fees paid. Uh, that'll be another six hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. I think some of that has already been paid. Uh, for a total of nine hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. That's an awful lot of funds in one particular year. Uh, some of those were anticipated to be collected last year. And for whatever reason, the project didn't get approved, stamped approved, that's when the fees are due. The revenue type below is broken down, whether it's utility or general engineering. And you can see that, that will total the same. Anticipated revenues for the coming year are, uh, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. That's based on projects that we have in the mix right now. That we anticipate will move toward construction. Some of those are far enough along, they may be in this current year. Some of them may not make it in the next coming year. We don't know. We give it our best guess. A project was submitted this week that I didn't even have on the list. So it, it fluctuates. But again, um, these fees that are generated, typically we hope that they pay for eighty percent of the budgeted costs. Uh, for the engineering department. And if you look at them over a three-year period this year, previous year, and next year, then I think that average is probably going to be around six hundred and fifty, six hundred. Which is more than eighty percent of the budget cost. Our budget request on the utility side is, uh, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. The general engineering side is four sixty. That is an increase over the previous year. Uh, we have found that, uh, some of the departmental assistance, uh, gets a little bit more involved. Sometimes it involves actually paying outside services that aren't budgeted in somebody's department. And, uh, so we have some flexibility in there to help pay for additional study when it's needed for outside services. Questions?
Thank you, Franz.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. IT Director, Mr. Kirk, I'm Ray.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council. Want to present to you all the information technology budget for the next fiscal year. Uh, first I'll go over the organizational chart. Uh, we have Chad Cross, who is, uh, I, I internal IT specialist. He manages the infrastructure and so forth for the organization. We also have Ray Smith, who's a contracted IT specialist. What Ray does is that he comes in on special projects. He's actually helped us out this year with, um, going through the process of moving all of our wireless, internal wireless devices and so forth. He managed that for us and to help with the vendors to get that put in place. And then we also have Justin Marley, who's also another contract IT specialist from Comtech. Justin actually goes through, he helps with the help desk and the daily operations of the organization. Over the last few months that he's been here, he's probably completed over about five or six hundred tickets. And so I think that's worked out very well for us. Highlights of, of our fiscal year is that, um, as you all know, we had multiple access control systems across the city. We had access control system, which is actually what allows for us to access the buildings and so forth. We had a different one here at City Hall. We had a different one at the, at the fire department and also at the police department. So we went through and we centralized that into one software package that we were utilizing at the police department. That allowed for us to tie into a centralized location, all access controls across the city. We've added new doors and stuff like at the OREC. We've added, um, access over at the public works facility, at the MIKE, uh, at the museum. And so this has been a big plus for us. It, it also allows for us to have, um, ID badges and so forth, so that everyone can be identified. And as each person goes through the system, they, they're, it, it actually monitors and lets us know who comes in at what time. We also had upgrade of servers and so forth, which it was at the end of life of these servers. These were, these are the servers that I actually use for like our primary applications and things of that nature, like Tyler and so forth. It allows for us to, you know, to be able to migrate that and, and be up to, to the latest technology on those, on those items. Uh, we updated, um, desktop replacements. COVID was a, was a big hit for us. And so we had a lot of systems that were desktop, systems that were old and out of compliance. So basically what we did this year was we were able to go through the process of replacing a lot of those desktops with laptops. So if we ever have another pandemic or anything comes about to where people have to work remotely for any reason whatsoever, that they'd be able to do that. And so I think we had about thirty that we had to replace. And I think at the moment we replaced probably about twenty-five of those. And so that's been a, that's been a, a big project that we worked through. We also had, um, new camera installs. So like at City Hall, we had old analog cameras. And so we replaced those with digital cameras so that they tied to our system, just to kind of back up just a little bit. The centralized access control system also controls the camera systems as well. So the cameras are tied into that system too, so that we can actually monitor doors and cameras at the same time. And get motion detections and so forth from the different locations. The Wi-Fi upgrade, which was citywide, uh, that's what I was talking about earlier with Ray. Um, we had access points, which we actually put one here inside the council chambers. So that, uh, people can actually access Wi-Fi internally. And that we will have a good connection for each of these locations. The access points that we had, um, previously were out of date. We couldn't upgrade them anymore. And so we went through that process and we updated those. Just so you know, citizens still have access to the Spectrum, um, Wi-Fi. And so they can still access that. But we also have installed with, through the Help and Hand Grant, free Wi-Fi at the OREC, Uth Walker, and Hope, uh, street parks. And so free Wi-Fi is available at those locations that, that is sponsored by the city. But we're also in the process of setting up, uh, the Giles Park as well. We just got power there. They're going to actually install the equipment next week. And then, um, get the services stuff installed hopefully within the next couple of weeks as well. And so we'll have free Wi-Fi for the residents there.
Kirk, remind us where the Spectrum Free Wi-Fi is throughout town?
So the Spectrum Free Wi-Fi, we still have some that's located here at City Hall. We had it, have it at the community parks. We also have it at the ORECs. We have it at the MIKE, if I'm not mistaken. If I missed something, I'll make sure I update you on that as well. But just to let you know, um, we're grandfathered in. They're no longer doing that for any other cities. And so, um, we're just trying to make sure that if, if push comes to shove and that ever goes away, we have a way to give, you know, our citizens free Wi-Fi as well. We also implemented a help desk system. Well, and as I stated previously, Justin has been going through those tickets. So what we've done is that, um, people, we normally just call Chad or myself or send us an email. And we have no way of, of tracking the metrics and so forth, as far as how many tickets were being put through. So we have a help desk ticketing system that people put, that they send in to IT support. They send in an email, it will automatically create a ticket. And then that way we can track and follow, make sure everything's put in place for everyone.
With tracking everyone and motion control, are you going to be integrating anything with HVAC or lights or anything like that in the future?
Um, we haven't gotten that far at, at the moment, but we are going to be integrating, uh, this to where, with the alarm systems that we have at each one of the buildings. So if a person comes, an employee comes in and they bad, badge in, it will automatically let you know who bashed in and disarmed the alarm. And so that's coming down the pipe as well.
As a reminder, last year, uh, Kirk originally asked for a new full-time position in the IT department. And we funded the part-time. And I think he would say that has worked out very well.
That has worked out great. Um, I mean, uh, Justin has been wonderful. And I want to thank the council for that as well. Uh, you know, resources are limited, but with his assistance, it has made a big difference in the IT department. Goals for next year, um, and I'll go a little bit more in depth on this. We're looking at fiber installation at city locations. So we're looking at actually having fiber that ties back here to City Hall. We've been working with a vendor to kind of see, you know, get some prices and stuff to see what that would take. So what we would do is have fiber, and it's called dark fiber, which would be dedicated fiber. That will be going to public works, to the police department, to the fire departments, and to the community parks, and also to like Lake Michael. And so we're still working out the logistics with them. And as I get further in my presentation, I'll go a little bit more in depth with that. The centralized access controls for phase two and three. What we have now is that the system is set up to where we only have one system, one server. So we want to, we want to be able to put in a secondary server that replicates the information from one to another. In case something happens at that location, we don't lose access to the system. And we have another location that actually keeps everything up and running. And we will also be tying that into like, uh, when onboarding and offboarding of individuals. If, if a person is actually off-boarded, uh, whenever we disable their badge, it will automatically disable all their accounts throughout. And so that's one of the things that we're trying to do with that as well. On the SharePoint deployment, what we're trying to do is that we are, we are actually paying for SharePoint with our licenses for Microsoft. And we have quite a bit of space. So what we're trying to do is actually set it up to where we can actually, um, give people access to their documents. No matter where they're located at, and it's encrypted and it's, and, and it's covered. So, cause like now we have on our local file system, just shares that people can go to and, and get their documents. This way, if they're off at a conference or whatnot, they don't have to have another login for VPN or anything. They will use the same login that they use for their email. And they'll be able to get to their files and, and things can be updated automatically. So that's one of the things that we're looking at. And as I stated, you know, we're also looking at upgrading the PD camera system. I know at the PD, um, we have quite a few cameras, I think, that, that are out. And they're, they're analog cameras. And so we're trying to get those replaced and, and bring them up to speed. Uh, so that, uh, all their systems are digital and not analog cameras. I've, I've already mentioned the alarm system integration with the door system. As I stated, um, we'll have it set up to where any location that has an alarm system, when a person badges in, it'll disarm the alarm. Based upon their credentials and will know who disarmed it. One of the things that we thought about doing was have it to, to, you know, re, um, enable the alarm. But that can be a little bit confusing. So it'll still be a manual process to re, to reinitialize the alarm when they leave. And the train museum, um, we've already done quite a bit over at the, at the OREC. So the, the existing museum already has badge access. Uh, the, the recreation facility has badge access. And so I, I talked to the, to, uh, the team over the, at the train museum. And so the doors and stuff that, that have been, um, that are not bashed enabled, will be bashed enabled. This way we can kind of keep track, because I know Aaron has had issues in the past with a lot of keys being given out. This way we can set badges for individuals who need to have access to those areas. Here, uh, this is for the copiers for the fire department. We need new copiers at the North and the Meven Oaks Fire Department. I think they're maybe eight to ten years old. I looked at both options as far as actually leasing them compared to purchasing them. So to lease them, they're like three hundred and sixty dollars for both copiers a month. And so over a five-year lease plan, you're looking at over twenty-one thousand dollars for that. And, but with the copies and so forth, even after the five years, uh, you know, we can, it's a lot cheaper to actually have the maintenance put on them. And just keep them going for the next several years and so forth, instead of actually trying to lease them out, because we'll pay more money leasing them. Um, and here, the fiber installation was what I was talking about. Uh, we haven't got the hard numbers that we wanted yet, but we're working with the vendors to get that. And so pretty much we have now, we have what's called a Metro E-connection. Which means that we have all of our sites connected through, uh, Town One or Spectrum. And so we're paying quite a bit of money for that, uh, each month. With this, we would have a return on investment within a year and a half. And plus with the service that they provide, it's, it's not even a third of what we're paying now. And so even, so I'm looking at both options. And so even, so I'm looking at both options of getting the dark fiber. The dark fiber installation will be so much cheaper, which will probably cut our costs based upon what they estimate for the business class. And it would up our speed ten times what we have now. It's probably roughly, you know, five to six thousand dollars a year. But if not, if we have to go with the business class, it will still save us twenty to thirty thousand dollars a year. So we'd still go through that process and wait for them to get us final numbers back. But that's an estimate based upon our conversation that we've already had.
Just a quick question. Are we able to kind of piggyback the fiber installation off of the larger fiber installation that's going on?
That's the company we're working with.
Okay.
Yeah, that's exactly.
So we'd be able to kind of do that in tandem?
Yes. And as I stated, the centralized access controls, phase two and three, that's what I was stating as far as having the backup server and stuff set up and integrating everything into uh so that whenever we disable a user, it will, it will disable everything across the board. So we don't have people who have access to our systems. As you can see here, uh, my expenditures have increased quite a bit. But the reason why is because they have not truly increased. Uh, I've been pulling money and stuff from the different departments. So I have worked with the finance department to actually pull all of everything that IT pays for into my budget. And so those were those additional expend expenditures are coming from. And so it's just pretty much transferring the money from the departments into IT so that we can manage it and we don't have, I don't have to go through multiple steps to to manage the budget for that. And, you know, we're moving forward forward with expanding security needs for the city, both physically and technolog- technologically. You know, but but by providing fiber to the city, we can grow because Meven is a growing, is a growing city. And we need to be ahead of the game. And so we're pushing forward. And, you know, our high, our highest priority is providing these and many other services to the city and the citizens. Questions?
Big one is software licenses and talk with Orange County. It sounds like it was Office three sixty-five, they're they're integrating a lot of that stuff. Were we getting dinged with any of that?
Yeah, that that's included in my budget as well. So uh, just to let you know, all the software licenses and stuff that we had across the city have been integrated into my budget. So we're managing, but yeah, the Office three sixty-five, we we actually purchase our license through Comtech. And so all that's been accounted for.
Excellent, thank you.
Do we uh, do we require our employees to take any uh training on um virus protection?
Yes, sir, we do. Yeah, um, and actually that's something that 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 I'm looking at now because I try to send out notifications to the department heads to let them know who has taken the classes and who have not. And so um that's something that we really have to push because of um making sure that we're in compliance and that we don't have to worry about, you know, malware and things of that nature hitting us. We are um, but we are securing our systems very well um because working through um Comtech and also through Benchmark, who's another provider, we have set up security operations center. So it monitors, we have software installed on every computer. And so if there's any alerts, it will lock that computer down and people can't get out. So we, but we do need to have the training pushed forward more so. But that's, that's something that is in place, but it's just that I've got to push it harder to make sure everybody stays in compliance with it.
Well, we started it, uh, of course, I've only, um, we've got a staff of six, but uh, our, our software company recommended that we do it. And it actually gives each person a score, but I thought it was the stupidest thing I ever heard till I started taking the classes. Oh, and not only does it protect the system here, they learn a lot to keep from losing credit cards and
Yes, sir.
Uh, so I didn't know, uh, we, we actually uh had a one course that took about twenty minutes online. But we get weekly courses. And this, you just cannot not imagine the number of ways they've created to get into your system, your credit cards, your passwords. The one we had this week, uh, they have software that can go through a, I think they said a hundred and fifty thousand soft uh password variations in a minute.
Yes, sir.
So if they get a portion of your soft, your password, they're going to have it for a minute or two. But anyway, I didn't know, uh, it doesn't take much. You you can put all the protection on system you want, but from the inside, it's hard to protect. If you have an employee do something, but not only that, but it's that that kind of stuff is a benefit to the individuals. I didn't realize it until I'm sending my daughter's notes every week, don't do this if they, she get an email. I mean, I I actually got an email from our IT director. It said, please download this file so I can look at your OneDrive. And I thought, well, that's kind of strange. So I called him and he said, no, no, no.
Never seen anything like that.
I mean, you know, you think of, you think an email from your IT director is pretty safe, but I, it's just stuff like that. I I don't know. Uh, it, I think it would be beneficial, and even though it's a pain, takes about twelve minutes out of my week. But uh, something like that's, I think, worthwhile. Uh, it doesn't take one breach in the city and we've got problems, but it doesn't take one mess that they make and they lose their
Lose everything.
Find out somebody bought a Ferrari with their credit card.
Yes, sir.
I do want to commend you and our other department heads. Your presentation kind of brought this to the forefront, though. You know, I feel like our staff in general does a really good job of looking at other pain points or other problems that have come up in other communities or countries and um really trying to get ahead of it. So I just wanted to commend everyone's proactivity. Good job.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Couple of things, um, te- kind of building off what Tim was saying, and testing, is, do we do random emails every once in a while? Excellent.
I I actually let the city manager answer that question.
So I was going to follow up with you. All these people in the audience uh have been tested and retested with random emails uh with their updates on the training they need to do for, my memory is at least the last two years.
Yes, sir.
As we all know, used to be all the talk was about them breaking in. And now it's about you picking up your phone and opening something that you shouldn't be opening. And they are constantly uh getting better and better and better at uh sending those emails. So yes, uh, I I think, and it may be longer than two years.
Yeah, it it has been. Yeah.
It's a uh constant education. I don't think any of us will ever be fully educated uh because as soon as they figure one thing out, it's something they
Which is a great segue. Um, any, so industry is going towards a MFA multi-factor authentication. Do we have any plans for that?
That's already been implemented.
Awesome. Excellent.
And just one, one final thing is that we also were setting up to where we actually, what's called a disaster recovery. Uh, we have, we did that once a year. But um per suggestion of the city manager, we're going to be doing it three times a year. So that makes sure that um if anything happens internally, that we can actually recover all of our systems in a timely manner and that it's not infected on an off-site location.
Ending. Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, if not, let's take a fifteen-minute break.
We don't have quadruple authentication yet, but I think it's coming.
It is.
Scan your eyes one day like in the movies. I can't wait, sir.
Man, absolutely.
Yep. Fabulous.
I don't know if she'll do it.
I know it.
I wouldn't, but
You would.
Yeah, you go run the court. You're too easy to shoot at.
That's okay.
All right, break.
Our next presenter, not the last this time. Water Resource Recovery Facility.
I'm glad y'all finally got that down. That took a long time.
What, they called you there?
Yes, yes, years it seems like. Well, Dennis, and these are, these guys right here were instrumental in putting this budget together. They, I don't know if y'all, y'all probably know Tony, this is Amanda, Amanda's our lab supervisor. Tony is the plant, I guess, supervisor, lead operator. But they've been, they've been instrumental in, in working on this. We're part of the utility fund with Kyle, and so that's, I guess it's why we're last. But anyway, so it's been a great year. I appreciate all you've done for, for all of us over the years. Because without y'all, we wouldn't be able to do the things that we're doing. Not just daily operation, but just these expansions we're getting ready to do. So now I'm gonna turn it over to Tony, and we're all be here for any questions that anybody may have.
Good, thank you, Dennis.
I'm pretty younger generation.
Amen, brother.
I may have been here nineteen years, I don't know. But I'm Tony, I'm at the Water Resource Recovery Facility, been there nineteen years, for whoever don't know me. So this year I'll be presenting the 2023, 2024 budget. So here's our organizational chart. We have six full-time employees with three part-timers. With one part-time operator, one part-time lab technician, and a part-time pre-treatment coordinator. So highlights for 2023, we started our facility renovation in September. It is on target to be completed in December. WEFTEC did a Canaf pilot presentation, which Amanda is going to go over the presentation.
Let me interject one thing here. They did the presentation at the annual global WEFTEC. It's for, it's an annual thing that folks, professionals from all over the world come and present there. And in this program, a lot of people take these ideas home, they write white papers, and go back and try stuff, give it to engineers. So there's a lot of new testing, a lot of new work comes out of it.
Right, and so the technology that they were presenting is Canaf. And I think you guys have probably heard a little bit about that through some of the earlier budget presentations. But it's a novel approach to media for biofilm growth. And so was it Mooresville, West Virginia, and Meven, North Carolina were the pilot programs for Canaf. And so they were able to present it at WEFTEC. So we've been actually using Canaf since 2011. But the full pilot study for Meven ran from 2020 to 2021, so that's what was presented. And so I guess Dennis has gotten quite a few asks on how that went, since that's been presented and people are starting to adopt it. Yeah, and, and so it's, it's, it's really neat because these kind of medias that you have biofilm growth on, a lot of times people use plastics or like some fixed medias with different kinds of materials, but Canaf is actually a plant. And so it is organic, renewable, and sustainable. And so we actually get this plant and this product from Eastern North Carolina farmers. So we're kind of keeping it in North Carolina and keeping it, keeping a renewable resource to be able to help treat our wastewater.
How long do they last?
So we actually recapture it and put it back into the system. Some does eventually get wasted out, but we can keep a load of Canaf working in the system for at least a year.
There are farms down east raising cadaf.
Yes.
We wasted our time on tobacco. Cadaf's not good, okay. He acts like he knows what it is, but I'm.
It's active. It's a cousin of marijuana.
Really? And the chief knows this? All right, anyway, y'all raising, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Any more questions about the Canaf study?
We've exhausted our knowledge up here.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Just a quick one, I guess who's all involved in the study? Who, any universities, surrounding universities?
So yeah, NC State was actually out here and did some pilot testing as well.
They wrote an article about that in the TPO magazine.
Yeah.
There is, it's a huge group of engineering, global engineering firms, schools, University of Wisconsin, as he said, she said, NC State, and they've all come together trying to perfect this, this operation. So it's, you know, it's really all driven by getting to net zero energy use. And that's one thing, that's the, that's the driver behind it.
Well, where, where did y'all, where did y'all get the idea to start this?
I just happened to be, we were having some little problems at the plant. I was messing in the laboratory, this is 2011, and just trying to get something to work, and it wasn't doing what I wanted to. A salesman happened to come in and said, I don't know, just the guy needs to come talk to you. So the guy that owns the company, that started this company, he came in. The next day, he brought this material and said, would you willing to begin it, and we'll just give it to you for six months. That's how it started, and so we've worked with them for five, six, seven years to try to perfect it, to get it where it could be, where it can be used and sustainable within the system. And then they finally got a system that can recycle it, like she was saying, so that you're not having to. When we started it, we put it in every single day. Well, now it recycles itself. It recycles itself, but that's how we got into it.
I was gonna say.
I'm sorry.
So we have been working with this technology for over ten years.
I mean, that's amazing.
Now the technology has been proven that it is real. It's not just, we're gonna try it. It is a clear benefit.
As Amanda said, that I've had calls from, I don't know, probably ten different engineering firms or wastewater treatment plants that have, don't like these things, that, that, that just want to know what is our take on it. And so it's, we've always tried to try new things, because I just think there's a, you, I, I'm kind of ADHD, so I'm never just happy we're doing something and not changing. So when I found out about a lot of this new technology, we just tried to find something that would work for Meven and be really efficient. And this is what we ended up with, and, you know, I appreciate y'all's backing on all of this.
Yeah, thank y'all for.
So as we're renovating and then expanding the plant, we will be utilizing Canaf as part of all that. And hopefully will help us treat the water better, maybe save a little bit of money. And the, the equipment to take it out and use it again is clearly part of, of the design.
All right, so this year we, all our employees have achieved a certification, either wastewater or a water certification. We started on our expansion for the new plant for this year. So the goal's to finish our renovation, which should be finished in December, continue the expansion design, additional staffing for the, the worth, replacing a building on the sludge building, placing a roof on a sludge building, which is 25 years old, and putting some more online monitoring equipment throughout the plant. Personnel request, we wanted a lab technician, a wastewater treatment plant operator. This will be converted from part-time to a full-time position, hopefully, if approved. And the capital improvement projects, like I said, replacing the roof and the city of Graham.
Oh, the city of Graham, the, we, since we own part of the plant, anytime they do any capital improvement projects, we pay 21.4% of whatever their costs are.
And capital requests, we would like to get chlorine analyzer to better manage our chemical, our bleach chemical in the plant, some aeration basin, DO meters to monitor the dissolved oxygen in the aeration basin, and replacing some aerators in the aeration basin. And expenditures, chemicals have more than doubled now. Some places I call, it's a waitlist on getting chemicals. So I have to reach out to a lot of people to see if, you know, they have chemicals in stock. But fortunately, the place that we do buy chemicals, they usually have it in stock. But it might be a delay, but we always have some online to keep us going. And SCADA services, we just want to be able to enhance what we do. So some of the, I guess, technology that we're using will require for them to do more programming. So that's why our SCADA services increased from last year. And that's the end, any?
I go to chemicals, are you, are y'all stocking chemicals that you use or ordering when you need it?
We do stock some. We usually kind of keep, like polymer, we usually kind of keep some on hand for at least two months. Hydrogen peroxide for odor, we try to keep in stock because that's not readily available. So we do try to keep a lot of chemicals in stock.
Part-time to full-time, are you, would you keep the same people?
Yes, we will keep the same people. One of the operators, plant operators, he actually is an operator at another municipality. So he does have his grade one certification, so we would like to keep him. And the lab technician, she's worked in various labs, doing lab work. So she is very familiar with what goes on at the plant.
What do you do with the sludge now?
We, we dewater it, just make it into what they call a cake and take it to a compost facility. If we're unable to get into the compost facility, we take it to a landfill. So we don't land, we don't land apply anymore like we did yearly ago.
Why, why did they stop that?
Well, I don't know, when I came here fifteen, sixteen years ago, there were starting to be some people that were upset that it was going on farmland. So we chose to start kind of backing out of it. And so now with all the things you're hearing now, PFAS and all these other things that are showing up, we're, we're extremely happy with what we're doing right now.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Well, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor Castle. Here to present the utilities engineering and administration budget, also the utility fund. I'd like to echo a thank you also for the support. This is our current organization chart. These 15 guys maintain 133 miles of water main, 123 miles of sewer main, 26 miles of sewer force main and 21 large pump stations. Our highlights from the past year. We have contracted out the design and grant administration for our new elevated storage tank on Third Street. Currently, we're at a 30% design stage and moving towards the 60% in the next month or so. We're looking, we've we've installed three additional pressure, water pressure monitoring stations throughout the city. So we can keep track on pressures around and and be notified early of any type of breaks or problems. We have replaced an old two inch galvanized line on McKinley Street, upsized that with a new six inch line. We're currently replacing the pumps at the Lake Michael Pump Station. And the GK and force main relocation is permits are out for that. And we're working to get easements on that project. And with the help of finance, we were able to roll out Water Scope to all the customers this year.
Well, when we add new infrastructure or was where that's a cheap gallons per minute available for hydrants?
Yeah, we, a few years ago, we implemented a fee for hydrant flow testing and modeling. So as they as new subdivisions submit their construction drawings for approval, when they're when they're at the point for approval, we will actually send our engineers a CAD file and they'll go out and do a field flow test and then model each new hydrant in that subdivision.
So our engineers do the PTO?
It's it's actually hazen and sawyer contract engineer.
Which we we the ones hire, yeah. Oh, good.
The rendering of our proposed water plant and location that we have purchased.
Looks good.
A furniture in the background.
When do you think that will?
We're looking to go out and bid later this summer. It has to be complete by August of 2025. And our goals for next year, we want to install three more additional pressure monitoring stations throughout the city. We're looking to replace a couple more galvanized water lines. In the next few years, the lead and copper rules are going to be going in effect where we're going to have to get all those out of our system anyway. So we're looking to do the at least get the engineering and permitting done for for those water line replacements. And also work on engineering for some rehabilitation of water lines under the railroad tracks. Looking at doing some preliminary engineering for some grant funding opportunities at a couple of pump stations for brick funding. We're going to do an inventory of all the the detector meters on the fire systems and try to outfit those with metron farnia meters where we can read those remotely. We still have a few old two port hydrants out in the system. We're going to try to replace those and also upgrade our meter setters. And have a few large meters left out in the system we're going to have to replace with metron farnia meters as well.
Do we ever look at requiring storks on new hydrant installations?
I'm sorry?
Do we ever look at requiring storks connections for the steamer on new hydrant connections?
I have not looked at that, no, sir. I'll be glad to give a follow up.
Has replaced all their steamer caps with storks, makes it easier for the fire problem. They aren't using adapter. I just thought of why you's putting new ones in.
I'll get with the fire chief. Got a couple personnel requests this year, a metering sampling supervisor. We're we're getting some new rules handed down to us from EPA in the state for PFAS, PFAS, lead and copper. It's going to increase our sampling frequency. We don't know to what extent currently, but this we feel like this position would help a lot with the the paperwork and reporting to the state along with keeping keeping projects moving on the ground. Also looking for a maintenance technician to to help assist. And this was what our proposed organization chart would look like with the new positions right here. Yes, currently we're borrowing folks from other divisions to assist on the metering and sampling side. Onto our capital. We're going to have to buy roughly 400 water meters this year, so that's that's all for new construction. Looking to replace a couple vehicles, a 2001 pickup and a 2007 pickup. We have a 2001 sewer jetter that is getting hard to find parts for. We actually broke down this past year and we had to contract some work out due to not having a sewer jetter on site and not being able to find parts. The air compressor is the same situation, don't know the exact year on that, but we know it's 25 years old. We're looking at a Bowman West Ten Road water connector. That will run along Bowman Road down to the new Buckhorn Business Center. And that will increase fire flows roughly 400 gallons a minute in Buckhorn Business Center and around 200 gallons a minute out on West Ten Road. Also looking at some engineering for an interconnection with Orange Alamance Water System. So it'll be an automated connection where if there's fire flows on either side, it would open up and also provide more fire flows in the areas where we have lower flows out on Buckhorn. Looking to do some engineering and permitting for the two two inch water line replacement projects that we know of. The G and Third Street project preliminary engineering will be for grant funding opportunities. We have a few water lines on railroad tracks at Eighth, Fifth, Third and Wilba, where we'd like to look at getting those lines, they're fairly old lines, just for insurance. And we have utility oversizing for new construction to upsize lines for water and sewer for future growth. And just like on the wastewater side, we have a water plant capital where we're 50 50 partners with the Graham Meben Water Plant. And we have to pay for part of that capital.
Kyle, let me interrupt you one second. The previous slide, the Bowman West Ten Road Connector. We have discussed with Orange County potentially getting some funding from them for possibly half of that project. So we don't have a firm commitment there in budget, just like we are. But we had did have a positive conversation with their management staff.
And our small capital requests, we're looking to put some security cameras at our current 11th Street Water Tower. I need to replace a lawnmower for pump stations and we're looking to purchase a camera for our sewer jetter. So we don't have to run the camera truck out there and the jetter at the same time.
Is that camera to guard against like the overflow you had back when the heater broke and?
Well, there's there's no way we could have guarded against that overflow with a camera. That's that's a pressurized sewer there as a force main that broke, so.
No, I was talking about the water plant, the tank on Leather Street.
Oh.
Security camera.
Security camera, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the jetter. Yeah. That overflow was kind of a freak incident. The heater that was in the vault quit working because of GFI, it tripped. And the PLC froze up to where we couldn't tell. We were feeling, we probably could have seen it with a camera. But the main, the main reason we were wanting to get that is because contractors have been coming in there to work on the antennas and they're supposed to call us to sign in. There's been multiple occasions where they've left the gates unlocked. And we would like to have their setup of motion detection where we would know when somebody's out there.
Will we be able to log in with those cameras or work with IT too?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
Shouldn't we have cameras on all our pump stations and those kind of things?
We have SCADA on all our pump stations, so we know everything's going on there, but we can't see it. Might not be a bad idea for the future. Have a few fee changes. These are mainly related to material costs. Prices have gone up so much on brass and copper, I I we can't, we can't make a three quarter inch water tap for it 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 cost me roughly $1,400 now to make that. So all these fees are just reflective upon the the cost of materials.
How 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 often do we do an analysis of cost versus fee on things like tap?
I typically do it during the budget year on on my side. Yeah. We were, we were close to $800 mark last year, but the prices have gone up so much this year.
Really? Not much in one year?
So as part of the budget, every department is asked to evaluate their fees with part of their budget presentation.
I was paying $20 for a corporation stock a year ago and now I'm I'm over $90.
Probably got to watch it now, you're not sure.
I mean, parts and electrical wire.
Yeah. And I have some increases in operating expenditures. Most of these are not very large, but professional services, we're actually looking to update our unidirectional flushing manual to to help keep our water quality up. Last time that was updated was in 2011 and due to all the growth, it's it's basically useless now. Small equipment, we we have to upgrade our utility locating equipment. So that's the main reason for the cost there. And then the laboratory analysis, we know we're going to have additional sampling this year.
Oh, some of them may not have ever heard of unidirectional water.
We 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 go around and shut off valves in certain locations and open up a hydrant and force the flow in one direction to scour the lines. And that's that's the whole purpose in unidirectional flushing, it improves water quality.
Does sometime cause a little cloudiness in the water in a neighborhood that happens.
Anytime you open a fire hydrant, you go, oh, some cloudiness.
That's one of the worst chewings I ever got from a lady that just washed her sheets.
I understand that feeling very, very well.
Yeah, the private contractors have the ability to pull up to a fire hydrant and get water.
With a meter from us, if they
With a meter.
If they've been approved.
They actually did it in front of my house this morning. I'm like, so I won't wash tonight, but it.
Feel free to pick up the phone and give us a call, the police a call.
I'm telling you.
Nobody should be connecting to our fire hydrants without permission from Kyle's department. So you should see a big meter assembly. And there are a few that can do it in different places.
Yes.
But you should always see a large meter assembly when they are doing that.
They're washing the street where they're building on the in that cul-de-sac I live in, they were washing the street. It's a private water service thing.
Yeah, I was not aware of that, so that's.
And he had a big wrench.
Yeah. And we've got some increases in projected revenues due to system development fees. We I know of some commercial projects coming in, so we take take those meter sizes and calculate the system development fees off of that. So those are, those are the increases we're seeing, we expect to see this year. And these are guys that that help make everything happen. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
I was hoping you could talk a little bit about the new lead and copper rules.
We don't know exactly what they are going to entail yet.
Okay.
There's a we know a little bit about it. The first step we have to do is do an inventory. And we actually received an AIA grant for that. We were waiting for that to get funded and then we'll move forward with the inventory assessment. Once that's complete, we will have to remove any known galvanized or lead out of the out of the system. And then once that's complete, there'll also be additional sampling requirements for residential houses because houses built before a certain time may have had lead solder, copper pipes, galvanized pipes, things like that. So.
This is the first time I've heard copper being looped in with some of that, so.
It's always been copper also. We sample for both, have been doing it for years. Yeah. It's just now they're creating new additional rules on top of it. We we sample, we currently sample for lead and copper every three years. And we've got specific locations around, I think I've got 70 sites around town that we that we sample for.
A lot of these rules, they collect the data for years.
Yeah.
And then after they require us to collect all the data, they start analyzing the data to figure out, do they need to change the law? So there's there's always something new they're testing for, hence part of his request for some staff.
Yes.
Because that's the the one person that's been doing most of that with help from other folks. And we anticipate that to clearly continue to be more and more and more testing. PFAS PFAS has been in the news recently.
Yes.
Never ending.
One other question, the Orange Alamance Water Interconnect. Is that strictly for fire services or?
It's it would be for fire flows, yes. It would not be open all the time. It would it would have altitude valves on each side or pressure valves on each side. When the pressure dropped below a certain PSI, then those valves would open up and and provide additional flows.
Leave Orange Alamance Water Systems interested in it as well.
They are interested as well. I've had discussions with the manager over at Orange Alamance. He was going to bring it up with his board as well. But, you know, now we're just, we're just looking into it now. We'll have to do some engineering to see what will work.
We do have an interconnection, but it's literally, I need water, I got to make a phone call, we got to send a crew out there at night. You got to turn valves. It's a process, so we have one other connection like this in town, and that is with Graham at the Commerce Park. So that whole vault structure and everything's changed so that basically instantaneously, if a demand is sensed on either water system, it sets everything for that water to go ahead and move. We meter it, settle up at the end of the month based on who used water or who didn't use water. So it's a very worthwhile, just like you see Duke Energy all over the county. They're connecting circuits so that when power goes out, things could be transferred from one circuit to the other. This is the same type of system with our water system.
Yeah, it would just be automatic because I've I've been out here at 2 AM turning valves to open up an interconnect.
How do your operator salaries and driver salaries match up? Are we still competitive in the market keeping our operators?
We're competitive with other cities, you know, private side, we're a little low compared to private, but that's that's a whole different ballgame.
You losing anybody?
I haven't in a while.
Clay Street, any quick updates right there? I'm not seeing anything in the budget, so hopefully we're looking okay.
We have an information session coming up on Tuesday, April 4th, one at 8:30 in the morning here in council chambers. And then we have a Zoom session that night, I believe it's at 7:00 PM. We will be starting that project on April 24th, I believe. Don't don't hold me firm on that date, but I think that's, I think that's the date.
It's the night of after the Dogwood.
Sunday, yeah, Sunday night after the Dogwood Festival, they're going to mobilize.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Kyle? Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Chris, do you have anything else?
Back me up one slide, Preston. I mean, that's a great picture of our water utilities folks, but that picture is represented with all the departments out here in the audience. Whether it's the wastewater staff, inspections, police, fire, public works, all of them have to work together to do all the things that we require as citizens in town. They're our most valuable asset. Y'all historically have done a good job making sure we have good people to work. And that's always important as we're moving forward with our budgets. We have other staff that maybe is not out there in the middle of the night, working on the side of the streets, but they like to get paid, we like to hire a good one. We like to get word out about what we're doing. So all of our employees are our biggest assets and I greatly appreciate that y'all understand that. Our goal through this whole budget is to make sure we have good people, we provide good service. They have the equipment that they need to do that. And I'm proud of what Meben has done over the years and continues to do through this budget cycle. And they put a lot of work and effort in not just working every day, but making sure we all understand what they need in their budgets and I, I greatly appreciate it.
I echo Chris, I, I just think that our staff as, as employees have been tremendous over the years I've been on the council. It makes, it makes it a lot of fun being up here when you have the quality of people out there, you know, and, and we get a lot of compliments, we do get complaints occasionally, but it's mainly about the mayor, but that's here and there. But it is, it is unbelievable how, how great our, our workforce is. And we need, we've always, Tim's been on it a long time, I have. We've always tried to protect our employees with, with pay and, and benefits and those kind of things. And we will continue to do that. Because you're right, we're not anything without, without the, the employees. Great point.
Well, that was, that, that was, raised my comment a couple times about the, are we competitive? You know, you can't, you, losing an employee because they're not happy with their job, you can't do much about that other than maybe find out why, but I hate to lose, well, a good employee because we're not competitive in pay. And there are certain positions you have to watch in the day, you know, as, as time changes, those change. But in today's environment, there are certain positions that you know are competitive.
And also having, have been in that situation and working with the city for twenty years, so I, I understand it wholeheartedly. And that was one of my bullet points on my campaign to support city staff and department heads and employees and everything. Because I firmly believe if you treat the employees right and they feel comfortable and enjoy what they do, then they will give you the best of what they have. So I'm a firm, firm believer in that and I have many good still relationships with my former coworkers. And I still enjoy being friends with everybody and do miss you guys, but I'm enjoying my retirement as well. But I do support you wholeheartedly and I think it's just great, all the presentations and how we're doing the budget work sessions now. You come a long way, thank you guys.
No more, no more Excel spreadsheets? No more Excel spreadsheets linking all over? No.
All right.
Just as a reminder, this has been the fun part where we talk about everything that we would like to do and have. And our next meeting is scheduled for, we had a slight schedule shift. So it's going to be Monday, April seventeenth at one thirty back in this room. That's where we'll be talking about both sides of the budget, the comparing the revenues and the expenditures and getting things ready for a budget presentation at the May council meeting and then a public hearing for the budget adoption at the June council.
But you will bring at the next meeting a budget prepared.
No, sir.
Okay.
I, I will be talking to you about the budget preparation. You'll get the proposed managers recommended at the May council meeting.
You know what everybody wants.
Part of your package.
So let's make it happen.
So, so they've heard me say it over and over then, I, I quote my dad when it comes to budget. He's probably never heard me say these words, but it's about wants and needs. You know, our goal is to always get you what you need and try to get you as much as we can about what you want. It is a budget, it has to be balanced by law with our revenues. So, you know, that, that's what we always are looking at. And I think we've done a good job with it over the years and hopefully we'll continue this year.
Will we get the revenue?
So we'll be talking about revenue neutral at the next meeting. So that'll be a part of it. So that's, this is where we get into the, the fun part of it.
All right, anything else from the council? Staff, have, have anything? Speak now, what is it, speak now, forever, anyway, if not, the most, the meetings adjourned.